...stormy night. Good evening and welcome. It's Thursday, February 18th, 2016. It is just after seven o'clock in the evening. This is the New Market School Board to call a meeting to order. Ask folks to rise and join Julia in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There has been, there has been so much going on with the superintendent search and the budget season, and so we don't this evening have a learning celebration to share. So we'll move right through the budget, and we're at public comment, and I'll invite folks to offer any comments that they might have for us this evening. Seeing none, we'll move along, and I'll ask Julia to offer her report, and then we'll consider the calendar that's before us with all kinds of great events coming up.
All right. Well, boys' basketball is 11 and 5, and their next game is Friday away against Walton-Lindenboro. Girls' basketball is 7 and 10, and their next game is tonight against Portsmouth Christian. And the ice hockey team's record is 10 and 4 and 1, and their next game is home against Keene. Vacation begins next week, and we'll resume school on the 29th. The sixth grade museum displays, parent night, will be March 2nd, so Wednesday, from 6:30 to 7:30. Progress reports come out on March 4th, and juniors will be taking the SATs on March 2nd. And lastly, I'd like to add that the Pizza Bowl was last night, and I would like to thank all those who came out to support our senior class.
That's awesome. Excellent. What group is promoting, what group is behind Chris Placy and the program that he's been doing? Is that PIC? Is it Wellness?
It's, uh...
Lisa?
Well, Lisa from Wellness.
Lisa from Wellness. I'm sorry that we haven't been talking about that, because the attendance hasn't been probably, I guarantee it hasn't been as high as it should be. There ought to be 100 people at that session, the value that Chris is offering up and the information that's being shared. Have we got a couple of those left? Maybe? Let's, can we try to just make a note? I'd love to have that on our calendar, because I'd like to be able to remind the public every chance we get. They just met Tuesday, not Wednesday? Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Was it last night?
Last night.
Last night? So they met last night, and that was his third, maybe, session. We're doing it monthly. He's been, Chris has been, as a part of our Wellness programming, he's been speaking to different perspectives or different elements of the, of, what do I want to say? Did I say opioid use, heroin, drug use in schools, our student population? It's not specific to New Market, it's specific to parenting and kids, and what we should be, what we should know and what we should be afraid of, and what we should talk about, and how we should tackle. Some of them are appropriate for parents only, some of them are appropriate to bring your kids. I attended the first one and thought, great thoughts about hitting them all, because it's just great information, but I want to make sure that we echo that moving forward. So look for that. Probably not one in March, right? We probably skipped that. Oh, no, we probably do have one in March. All right, so March 3rd, I'll try to make sure we know what that is. I don't know what act of God or Congress it took, but the fact that dessert and a show is on a Tuesday night this time for my kid, and I'm gonna be there, I'm gonna be there grinning to watch her in the band, that's great. That's Tuesday, the 15th of March, at 6:30. At the elementary school, dessert and a show is Thursday night, the 17th, at 6:30. Anything else that should be on our calendars? Awesome. Excellent. Moving along then. We had the opportunity at the public hearing to welcome Meredith Nato, having been hired as our next superintendent of schools, joining us July 1st. But, but that was a, was a different kind of session, and not everybody was there. But Meredith is in the room with us tonight, and so for those that are watching at home, and for the rousing audience of rabble, you know, zealots here in the room, just hold them at bay. We want to make sure that they don't jump up and come get you. But Meredith is joining us, and if she has even a couple of comments to make, what I asked her to do when we met earlier was, with absolutely no notice whatsoever, and you don't have to talk about all of it, it's been a lengthy experience that you've had, but just remind the folks, if you came to the mic, remind the folks where you came from, you know, all of the things that make them feel like you're a local, and introduce yourself in that regard, will you?
Certainly.
We're so glad to have our next superintendent of schools joining us tonight. Meredith Nato, everyone.
Thank you so much. It feels strange to be...
Come on down.
So I will be coming to you, most recently from Cape Elizabeth, Maine, where I've been the superintendent for the last four and a little bit more than half years. And prior to that, I worked as the director of instruction in the Oyster River Schools, just a few miles down the road, and at the time, we lived in Lee. We still have a house there at the moment. I am a parent to nine and seven-year-old daughters, and have a wonderful husband who has been home with them for the last number of years. But I am also the granddaughter and great-granddaughter of New Market High School alumni. My grandmother graduated back in, in the 40s, and her mother before her in the 1920s, in the late 20s. So I'm one of the first graduates of the old building here, that pieces of which are, are still very much in use today. So I feel like this is...
Both of them must have had at least one class in this building. Because wasn't this...
Oh, I'm sure.
Not until later years?
This was a parochial school.
Oh, this was parochial? Way, way back? Okay. Cool.
But I have...
You had classes.
I'm not sure what the Pizza Bowl was, but I do remember bowling in the bowling alley in New Market as a young woman, and visiting Dr. Rob Shaw in his dental practice down the street for a number of years. And again, feel like this is a very at-home community. I had the opportunity today to visit with folks across the district, and spent some time at the junior, senior high school, and at the elementary school later in the day. And again, I'm really excited to be coming here. To me, this is what feels like a great fit. It's a small community that I think is very collaborative and enthusiastic and creative about meeting the needs of students, and holds education as a really strong core value, and I'm excited to come to work for you.
Outstanding. Great. Excellent. We welcome you. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
We, I, I called, called home as I was driving to New Market for tonight, and when the call was answered, my child said, "Are you going to meet with the new superintendent now?" And I said, "I am, in fact. How did you know that?" And I thought, did I put it on a calendar somewhere that she saw? She said, "No, but I know she's here." And I said, "What do you mean? I saw her today." I said, "Oh, did she visit the junior, senior high?" I saw her at both schools. Should I tell, should I tell Meredith that she's, she's in trouble? Are you stalking her? It's too great. She was definitely present in the schools. It's great to, it's great to get those reports from the kids, so...
Welcome, welcome.
Glad you were in the district today. That's great. So having had a chance to do that, let me shed light on one of the other benefits of Meredith being with us today and this evening. The next item on the agenda is a report on district transition planning. And so in fueling the fire of speculation that Nathan likes to hear himself speak, let me do so for just a couple of minutes, and, and tell you where we, tell you where we've come from and where we're at with regard to transition planning. We have now named, we've selected through a very successful search process, our next superintendent. The school board engaged, began in a conversation about transition and, and some change that might be appropriate well over a year ago. Our interim superintendent, Dr. Martin, made comments to us last year a couple of times that, that one of the things that the district could certainly benefit from is having a more, a more defined number two in the organization for times when the superintendent is unavailable, or certainly the interim was seeing some of that. He's working as many days as possible, but staying under a 32-hour threshold. And so having a definitive number two in the organization for that, but also to provide leadership and guidance in any number of areas in support of the superintendent of schools was something that he brought to us as a, as a subject matter some number of months ago. And so the board has, has tossed that around and continued a conversation about defining the number two in the organization. And then through the process of, through the process of search for a superintendent, we actually sat in a number of interviews the board did with candidates, and talked about the human resources at the disposable, disposal of a new superintendent, the benefits that could be derived from adjustments to that were discussed. We talked about the resources that we have, that we should have, that we could have, and got feedback from a number of candidates. And we had feedback from the search committee, because they had some conversation as well through the process that led up to that. All through that, among the things that were discussed was the importance of, of strong support for the superintendent in the, in the superintendent's office. Since we've hired Meredith, we've had multiple opportunities to sit with her and discuss the structure of the organization today, the assets that are in place, and, and the, and some of the changes that we might consider making moving forward. One more consideration that factors into all of that is that Pat Ballantyne has been with us for approaching 40 years as an educator, and as currently the director of curriculum instruction. She's a, a very important asset to the district and leader among our administrators. And she has announced her retirement June 30th, and so there, there is a need to fill that vacancy, but also an opportunity to contemplate change that might benefit the district. So the board's been involved in all of that conversation, or we have had that conversation. And the public certainly can be and should be aware of the fact that we have taken the opportunity to go in a non-public session on multiple occasions over the last couple of months for purposes of discussing personnel matters, specifically the promotion and/or hiring of public employees, because we've been discussing this transition, the organizational structure that might best serve the district moving forward. And, and so tonight, this report on district transition planning is, is really just the first step, I think, in beginning to roll out the changes that we anticipate making. And, and the, the goal certainly should be said is to make sure that we help Meredith Nato, our new superintendent, hit the ground running in July, and, and help support her in providing the greatest possible productivity in terms of leading this district, at least over the first six or 12 months. So all of that said, how was that? Do I say enough to lay the groundwork?
No, I think it makes, it makes total sense, Nate, that we, you know, we want, we don't want to lose any time that we can, you know, gain by, you know, sound transition planning. We know we have needs. Pat's, Pat's gonna be transitioning in her role, and, you know, it's a great opportunity that, you know, and where, I guess, it's great that Meredith has given us some of her time already, so we don't have to start fresh on July 1st. This is the way to do it, you know?
And I think the other thing is, is most people that know Pat and knows Pat's role in the SAU, it's, it's broader than director of curriculum. She, in fact, has been during many years of transition and many years of new superintendents, holding the, holding the ball for us. And to have her go out, which we're, we're not pleased she's doing, but she deserves it, to have, to have things in place for June 1st is mandatory. We're losing her, we're getting a new superintendent, so we, as you said, Nate, we've put a lot of thought into what those, what those alternatives could be, and I think we've come up with a, I know we've come up with a great solution.
I think it's a great solution. Well, let me say this out loud then, and then I'll ask the superintendent to help us out. The consensus of the boards for all of this exploration has been, and, and with the support of both our interim superintendent and our forthcoming superintendent, the first step in our transition is to, is to rename the position that Pat has been filling as director of curriculum instruction, renaming that to assistant superintendent. The position right now is a little bit, little bit greater than school year in terms of number of days under contract. We need to make the position a 260-day full-year position, and clearly define this position as we move forward as, as second in the organization. And certainly the job will focus on curriculum and instruction and student assessment, as Pat's has, and there will be support for an oversight of federal grants, not just, not just the consolidated grants, but maybe all of the federal grants. And there are other elements that may certainly be added under that umbrella as we continue to discuss the job description and the position. So that is our, is our first, our first announcement, I guess, is that we're ready to move forward in creating a new name, renaming that director of curriculum instruction position assistant superintendent. And I guess before we had discussed it any further, maybe you could help us, because we have a more specific plan than that, based upon all of the work that we've done, and if you could make a nomination, we'll keep going from there.
Thank you, Nathan. As a newcomer to, to New Market, when I first arrived a little over a year and a half ago, I, I felt it to be my assignment to learn about the district. And as, over the course of the year, I thought one of the most important or things that happened was the recognition New Market got as a quality school system in, in the course of the year. And, and, and I thought that was extremely important. And when you think in terms of transition, you think in terms of it trying to be seamless. You don't want too many things to fall through the cracks along the way. You want it to, you want to, you want continuity, continue to do the things that we're doing well, and you need help as a superintendent to have some folks help you with that, because you have a lot to learn. And finally, you're trying to keep everything running smoothly or in balance. And when I was trying to figure out how New Market achieved this academic success and this academic recognition, I really felt there were two people in the organization that had a major role in accomplishing that. They had been here for a period of time, and they were both very strong in curriculum. And one is retiring. That's Pat Ballantyne. And the second, I felt, was Chris Andruski. I felt his 10 years of service to the district and his attention to curriculum and instruction really was impressive. And in fact, he's obtained graduate degrees in that. And, and so therefore, I'd like to nominate him for the new, the renamed position assistant superintendent of schools. As you know, that's your decision whether you follow that or not, you have to elect, but, you know, when it comes to certified people, it's the superintendent's job to do that. And I'm proud and pleased to put his name before you.
And I am proud and pleased to accept that nomination.
Let me have a second then to that.
Second.
So we've had some conversation about this, obviously, through these several weeks of discussion and planning. I guess I would open it up, I would remind folks that what we're talking about is, is transition that would rename the director of curriculum instruction to assistant superintendent, a position that ultimately Chris would fill full-time in July after past retirement. In the interim, Chris will begin the transition, I think we've talked about, and it needs to be said, Chris will continue to be the principal of the New Market Junior and Senior High School through June 30th. But will some number of hours, day, day and a half, whatever can be worked, begin to work in the central office with Pat and with the superintendent, and begin to manage that transition towards July 1 being full-time in that role. So having said that, you know, we've had hours of conversation. Thoughts that folks have that they'd like to share that help guide us in this?
But just working with Pat over the past three years, you realize, and we've said it numerous times, Pat is the assistant superintendent. We've just never acknowledged that. We've never given her the title. And to, it just makes more sense. There's more to her job than just this curriculum coordinator that we've, we've seen her, spread herself out so thin lately. I just, I think it's a natural transition. Meredith really, Meredith and Michael helped us with see that.
You know, I, from my standpoint, coming out of the private sector, one of the things that excellent organizations do is they develop their employees. And that's a sign of, that's a sign of an organization that's selfish, because it wants continuity. It wants people to feel like they have a place to go. One of the things that disturbs me about municipal employees, particularly in leadership roles, is they tend to turn over every three or four years. And I can tell you as a board member, that's very disheartening, because you lose the essence, you lose the institution that you're trying to work so hard for. So I, I look at it, I don't know Chris that well, I mean, I've worked with him only this short period of time, but as a, as a practice, excellent organizations promote from within. They don't promote from within just to do it, but they take advantage of these opportunities. And I'm, I couldn't be more thrilled and proud to, to be able to do it.
I'm, I'm, you know, I'm excited, as much as I get excited, I suppose. It's not usually a term I use, but it's a win-win-win for everybody, and that's an overused term, because, I mean, I totally heartily agree with Al that it, promoting from within is, is healthy. It not only is, is healthy for those individuals to get promoted, but for, for the organization to realize that there, there can be opportunities from within. It's healthy because somebody wants to stay. He's, Chris has been here 10 years. He wants to stay. That's a good thing, you know? It's helpful in, certainly in the immediate with Pat, you know, Chris and Meredith, sort of, and Mike putting their heads together. We've got fresh eyes coming in to look at things, you know? A vast experience in Meredith, and we've got institutional knowledge with Pat and Chris. And my, my, my late father-in-law used to say, "Mike, you might be smarter than I, than I am, but I've made more mistakes. So listen to me."
[laughter]
You know, and, and we got a lot of, we got a lot of, lot of experience and a lot of, lot of brain power here. And from a, from a board point of view, and from a district point of view, I'm happy to see that, you know, and this will be a trend, I think, going forward, that we're, this is affirmative planning. We're not showing up on July 1st, and Meredith doesn't know where the key to our office is, and that type of stuff. This is proactive. It's, it's thoughtful. And, you know, I think, I think it's gonna work out for, for all involved. We're not throwing Chris immediately into the fire. He's got, you know, kind of a busy job running the school. I think that, you know, he would say that. And, but I get, I'll reiterate, I'm very, I'm looking forward to this.
Excellent. I think, Mike, you hit it on the head when you talk about, the thing that excites me the most is hitting it proactively instead of reactively primarily, but also taking the wealth of knowledge that we have from Chris, bringing him to the central office, and then having Meredith come in with fresh set of eyes, fresh new ideas. And that team leading the district can take us as, as far as we want to go. And I think it's a very exciting time for us. And...
If I, if I can talk just a little bit more, I want to give Chris a few props. I've seen him in a couple of different roles. Last year, I coached kind of side by side with him on our girls' basketball team. Our daughters are close in age, and, and you can't fake enthusiasm. You can't fake excitement and genuineness. And, and I saw that in, in Chris. He, you know, if practice could have been four hours, he would have kept the girls there. I mean, I mean, that, that tells me a lot. And, you know, the other thing that tells me a lot is when, more recently, when we, Chris and I have been sitting down and working on, on, on the ed specs, I, I can really tell that, I sense, I sense enthusiasm there, that he's not, you know, Chris, he wants to be there, and, and he's, he's excited about the process. And, and, boy, you can't, you can't, can I, can I say something else? My, my father-in-law said, what was the other one? You, you can buy somebody's back, but you can't buy their heart, you know? And you, Chris is here because he has a good heart, and he cares about this place. And I think you can't underestimate that.
And finally, from an organization standpoint, one of the things we talked about, we talked about candidates, we talked about defining positions, we got input from candidates, from the search committee, from us. And one of the practical matters we have to deal with is, is replacing Chris. And we need to do it now.
Yes.
Because if we're gonna have a new principal in the school July 1st, we're right at the end of the recruiting circuit. So selfishly, it's a need to get this, to get this thing rolling. So...
Well, we've been involved in this planning, in this transition conversation now for, seems like forever. And so for the benefit of the public, tonight is the first step, and we have some other announcements that we'll make. And then we just continue to work forward on the details that, that we haven't shared tonight, or that we don't have tonight. But I have to say, I want to say for Chris, I sat with him on a couple of occasions talking about building needs, program needs, and I, I shared with him the other day. I, in all of the years I've done this, working with principals, he really shines in terms of the command that he has of the program, and the space needs, and the command of everything that's happening in his, in his organization right now at the junior, senior high school, in terms of how to best optimize, how to nuance, how to roll the punches. He's certainly doing that in the absence of a gymnasium over there right now, and finding ways to continue to, you know, to, to make peace and to make productivity every day in that building. And, and I'm glad that we're finding a way to continue to grow him and give him opportunities, but keep him here to the benefit of our district and our community and our kids. So the superintendent has put forward a nomination for Chris Andruski to become assistant superintendent of schools for the New Market School District. Is there any more discussion? I have a motion from Elizabeth McKinney, and a second from Al Zink to accept his nomination. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? We're unanimous. Chris, congratulations.
Can we shake a hand?
I think we should take a three, four, five minute break, and just give a chance to say hi and thank Chris. And invite the public, don't go away. We have more to talk about. There's a job description that I floated at the table, we'll bring that up under Position Descriptions or under Personnel in a few minutes. That's just a draft, I've given the draft to Chris and to Meredith, excuse me, and to Pat, and take all the feedback based upon Meredith's expectations moving forward next year, Chris's experience, and his, the conversations that we've had about this, and Pat's experience in the job that this was, the Director of Curriculum Instruction. And so, I invite us to have some conversation, if you'd like, about it when we get to that point in the agenda. Otherwise, what I'm hoping is that they'll give us some edits, and we'll revise that and review that at our next meeting as well. So, back to the public conversation. Couple of other things, and the details, again, we have less substance maybe with, or, you know, to offer with the next couple of things, but it's important that we give you a sense of where we're heading, and then we'll talk more at the meetings that are coming. Meredith is joining us July 1st full-time, and she is investing some time and is among us. As I said, she's met with us multiple times in this conversation, and we continue to talk about others. And so, we want to try to build a process, or build a transition that allows her to have some impact and some influence on the conversations and the decisions that we make. We're looking for her, to her for guidance. At the same time, we appreciate Mike Martin and the role of superintendent acting as our actual superintendent right now, but also recognize that over the next four months, Mike, who's part-time now in that role, will begin to transition himself towards June 30th, and at some point, will become more part-time than he is now, as other opportunities present themselves, and as we transition these guys in. One of the concerns that we anticipated the public might have would be that we are creating a whole lot of quote-unquote administrative strength here, or administrative expense or presence. And the reality is, we're trying, as we talk about this transition planning, to really transition all of the bodies in and out, if you want to call it that. And so, Chris will begin to come to the central office and work in a part-time capacity as Assistant Superintendent. The details of that, we're still working through. What I think everybody needs to know is that Chris will continue to be principal, as I said a few minutes ago, and he will maintain a home at the Junior Senior High primarily. And even when he is working as the Assistant Superintendent on central office issues, he may certainly be doing that, sitting at his desk there, or you may find him in the central office down here at Town Hall. As we contemplate, as we contemplate the chaos that may come, and we don't want chaos, we want organization, but as we contemplate interim transitioning out, a new superintendent transitioning in, Pat mentoring Chris, and Chris working in that central office role, the other announcement that we'd like to make is that, in order to clarify, and we hope that it does, Pat will continue to be the Director of Curriculum Instruction for now, but we're going to retitle Pat. This is a decision the superintendent can act on, will act on, retitling Pat Assistant to the Superintendent. And the greatest role that Pat will offer up is that, for the next four months, she will, in the absence of the superintendent, be, well, not in the absence of, she will be that number two that we've talked about. She's essentially been that, and we've talked about her being that, but we want to make sure that we say it publicly to Pat. You're it! But we say that for public consumption. Certainly, we've leaned on her that way, as have the superintendents that have come and gone, and I know Mike would say that she's been real important to him over the last few months, that he's been here with us. And so, that's another change coming, is that Pat will take the role of Assistant to the Superintendent. And it'll be a great way, it'll be a great role in that case for her to liaise with both of the superintendents coming and going, helping to channel information effectively and appropriately to them, so that we can get the right decisions made. Mike will continue to act on things that have to be acted on day by day. Certainly, we want to shove in Meredith's direction things that have impact beyond July, and that she'll want to know about and begin to prepare for, and we'll count on Pat to help judge that in the absence of the superintendent, and give guidance to those topics as they arise.
And I think, most importantly, organizationally, we talked about this, is Mike's hours reduce, his availability is going to reduce, and we want to make it clear to the organization that people should be going to Pat.
Right.
Not trying to get Mike Thursday morning at 1:00. So if it's a personnel issue, or, I can't articulate other issue, administrative issues, the reporting relationship is clearly going to Pat.
Right.
And Pat will do what Pat needs to do to work with Mike, to have the, I don't want to say bureaucracy, but that's only fulfilled.
She can effectively make decisions that she judges are appropriate for her to make, and she'll find the right people to make decisions if she doesn't feel she can, and she'll appropriately delegate if there's others that can act.
And if Pat feels the necessity to go further to the board...
Yep.
Or to Mike, that's her call.
That's her call to make, yep.
But the organization look at, should look at, will look at her as being the superintendent in charge for this next three months.
For the public's consumption, for everybody's consumption, we, one of the things, as we talked about planning, was, oh, wow, well, we can't call everybody, we can't call, not everybody, we can't have two Assistant Superintendents run in at the same time, but we wanted to try to declare that role, and so we've decided Assistant to the Superintendent would be the way we would do that, and we hope that there'll be some clarity. The job description will change only in such, only in the way that you just described. We will add that level of responsibility for organizational matters. Her functional duties otherwise will continue, she'll continue to be the be-all and end-all that she has been all along, so...
I think somehow, we need to, or somebody needs to communicate to the organization what we're talking about now, because it will surely come up in the next day, or week, or month.
I think one of the things we've talked about is that, moving forward, not only will there be a press release that will describe the decisions we made tonight, but there'll be an internal release that will clarify Pat's role, and that'll be, that'll go out to all staff, so that we know that internally.
Chris and Sean will probably meet with their staff.
Then on those snowy, snowy evenings, Mr. Martin, Dr. Martin can repose with his comforter and let Pat worry about whether we're going to call off school or not.
That's awesome. So, the board has an organizational plan that speaks to this. It didn't make it into the packet, but we will revisit, and we will add that, along with the job description, to the packet next time. Now that we have this document, we can advise, you know, we can tweak it and adjust it. We'll add that to the board packet next time, so that it's more public, and it gets more circulation, and people have a sense of what we're describing and discussing. Before we move in on the, move on the agenda to other things, I guess I look out at the audience, and I see Meredith and ask, anything, any comments, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot any more than I already have, although we'll always do this, just this way, but anything else that you'd want to say that we haven't said about the transition and the planning, and how we've done, and how we're going to do what we're going to do, anything else that, you know?
I don't think I have a lot to add. I certainly appreciate that I've had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Martin on a couple of occasions, to meet with the board, I've had the opportunity to meet with Chris and with Pat, and so I feel like everything's been really well thought out, I feel like people are poised to sort of move this forward, I'm confident that there'll be open communication and collaboration, and I look forward to, you know, working with the board and Dr. Martin in moving the principal search forward, and certainly, there'll be additional communication, obviously, that comes, you know, from Dr. Martin's office and from you as that moves forward. But I feel like things have been very thoughtfully done, I trust the judgment of people who have worked here, certainly, you know, I've had limited interactions with Chris, but I certainly know of the work of the district, and, you know, as Dr. Martin described, the accolades that the high school, junior senior high school has received over the years, and I feel like he has that strong background, as you've described, a lot of great reasons to move him into that role, and I look forward to working with him.
We really do appreciate you joining us tonight, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, guys. Anything else on that subject of reporting on district planning? Excellent, and let me move on to continuing items. We have two continuing items we've held on to, one is facilities, one is communications. Mike, you want to offer up anything on the facilities? Has it been quiet?
This is great, Nate, after all that good stuff, they follow the facilities. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Get excited.
Yeah.
That's Mike excited.
Whatever he's chewing on, I want some of that, because he's had some real nuggets tonight, this is great.
Facility, I've already alluded to what Chris and I have had, it's not just Chris and I, but it's, we're sort of at, I would call it more the editing phase, you know, fly specking the ed specs, which are, their last stop is not, obviously, with us, we've talked about it before, that the idea here is, since these are such a foundational document for any facilities solution, for both schools going forward, that, and we're working on the elementary version too, with Banwell's help, with the architect's help, that we really need to make these clear, they need to, somebody, towns person needs to be able to, you know, they find a copy of these at the bean while they're grabbing their coffee in the morning, pick them up, and be able to understand what they are. You know, if we don't do that, I think we've kind of failed in that effort, and these, that's why we're, we've sort of pulled up the brakes a little bit on meetings, and we were meeting pretty frenetically there for a while, because we realized that, you know, we've got to nail these things down, and so we've been working on that. We expect to probably wrap those up in the next, in foreseeable future, your next couple of, three weeks, and then move it on to a joint meeting, and as Meredith's sitting here, obviously, Meredith has to cast her eyes over them too, because she's got valuable input, and, you know, will ultimately live with them, but have, you know, a joint meeting between the Facilities Committee and the School Board, so, and the architect, and all players from administration, so, we can answer all our questions at once, hopefully, they'll be self-explanatory, they'll make sense, and we'll check off on them, and we'll move forward, but we need to do that, so that's what we're up to. Nothing else on facilities? And I guess next is communications.
I'll start, Al, if that's okay.
Sure.
We, thanks to Chris Williams from Channel 13, we have produced a video that is going to be released, really starting tomorrow, through the newsletter, and various social media sites to discuss the Warren articles for the votes that's taking place on March 8th, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Town Hall, just so people can be aware of the items that are to be voted on, some background information on them. With the communications piece, after this goes out, we will then, the next piece of communication will be a blurb of some, in some form, about the transition plan that we've just talked about tonight, with input from all the parties involved, so that we get it clear and concise, and that everyone understands fully what we're doing. So that's where we sort of stand with all that. One more, two more things. Thanks to Chris for meeting with me, and Chris Andruski, and for Jason Carey for the help that he's done, helping me navigate the technical waters of all this stuff, I appreciate them most.
So I did, Nate and I did the videos, we actually were...
Very excited.
There, yeah, I was really excited. Where do we find them?
They're going to be, they're on YouTube on Channel 13 right now, they're going to be on the school landing page of the website, they're going to be sent out via the MailChimp newsletter database, there's going to be a phone, a blackboard message sent out to the parents in the district, asking for people to sign, subscribe if they haven't done it. There was an option to subscribe in the town newsletter, as well as some communication from the rec center. So, we're trying to, and I met with a wonderful towns person today, who gave me some great ideas about getting it out even further, so we'll take some of those initiatives too, and move it all forward, so, just to keep people informed.
The only thing I've got on communications, we talked at the last school board meeting about having three meetings in March of individuals that met with Mike and I early in our school board careers, to talk about what we've been doing on the school board, and get input from this group as to whether they think we're doing the right thing, the right way. So, next week, a letter will go out to all of the people that participated in those meetings the last time, and given that Mike and I are not newbies anymore, and given the fact that three of us can't meet together with the group, we're going to break up those three meetings with two of, some of us, to talk about, to talk with you. The other thing we're going to do is, we're going to include the report, help me here, Mike.
Joyce Report.
The Joyce Report with that letter, so that we expect people to come in prepared for the meetings, to talk about what that report says, and so we're going to require a little bit of homework from those folks. For those individuals that don't receive an invitation, in the letter that goes out to the people that were at our first meeting, we're going to give them the opportunity to invite additional people. And as uncomfortable as we may feel about having made the first selection, we promised those folks that we would get together with them again, and they're extremely diverse group of folks. So, at the next board meeting, I'll announce when those meetings are, we're going to have a signup sheet, and with Kim's help, we can do some kind of first-come, first-serve sort of scheduling. But it's a half-work session to talk about the Joyce Report, half, a little bit of an introduction as to what we're doing now, but most importantly, to send us off with any public input, very diverse public input on primarily facilities, but other things as well. So we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Maybe next year, I'll be invited to some of those Christmas parties you all are talking about. Get out and meet all these people. All right. Moving on from continuing items, we talked about the position description for Assistant Superintendent. I'll invite folks to offer any feedback via email, and then we'll see that in our next packet with the adjustments that the administrators offer up. That moves us on to policy. There are four new policies, forgive me, there are three, there are four policies up for discussion, one of them's new, the other three are revised. I draw your attention to the first one, which is Policy GBEBD, Employee Use of Social Networking Sites. This is a first read, and these adjustments are bold-faced. It starts out with the first sentence, which is that the school board strongly discourages schoolers and employees from socializing with students on social networking websites and apps. It now clarifies not to be limited to just, including but not limited to MySpace and I think we have to have some more conversation about this moving forward, because if you go to the third, fourth, fourth, excuse me, paragraph that is being added, it says, "Staff members should not use social media for school or class-related purposes." And I'm going to ask the administration to consider that and throw that back a bit, because there are tools like Twitter and others that we are using, I think, in the course of some instructional practice, but more importantly, we use it as well in the schools for communication about activities and events, both for students, especially at the upper grades. Facebook says you have to be 13 to have an account, I know that's not always the case for some of our kids, but certainly 13 is a reasonable age for a freshman, so anybody in high school might reasonably have access, and I think we're using that as a tool to communicate effectively, things like practices and activities and otherwise. So, this is just a first read of a revision, this revision came not from internal, it came from the School Board Association, and I'll ask that next time, the administration bring us back their feedback on any version of that that we might be able to keep, but I don't think we can make that bold a statement, because we're actually using it now.
And I don't even think, does MySpace even exist anymore?
Well, but that's for some of us old people, but...
No.
Even Facebook doesn't exist for kids, they've moved it on, that's for old people now. So, any other comments or thoughts about that first policy? This is just first read, so we don't need action on this tonight, we're just...
I look forward to hearing from administration.
Yeah, I agree.
You guys know more than...
Okay, then the next policy is Policy ILDA, Non-Educational Questionnaires, Surveys, and Research. This is a new policy recommended by the School Boards Association. We have a policy ILD, which describes and governs educational questionnaires, surveys, and research. This policy deals with noneducational questionnaire, surveys, and research. It holds that parents will be notified at least 10 days prior to the district... It holds that parents will be notified at least 10 days prior to the district administering a non-academic or noneducational survey. It further permits them to review the survey or questionnaire prior to it being administered if they request, provides an opt-out opportunity, asks that it be in writing, that may be I think we should take this under advisement, consider that, read through it, we'll be ready for a second read next time. Any other thoughts? Moving along then to Policy JCA, this is an existing policy being revised, it is Change of School or Assignment. The bold faces are elements being added. Essentially, it speaks to the Superintendent determining when a reassignment is warranted, presenting that reassignment to the Board.
What's a reassignment?
If you move your child out of district, put them to another school, assign them to another school.
Or another school within the district.
If, yeah.
In a larger district, we might reassign elsewhere.
So the Superintendent needs to approve it?
The Superintendent, right now, of course, we only have the one school.
No, 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 but if my kid goes to another school, I need the town's permission to do that?
No, not if you just choose to do that unilaterally, depending on the circumstances, very seldom, but on occasion, you have a situation that might occur, tell me if I'm wrong, but this is the way I would describe it, where, for reasons, you know, extenuating circumstances, it might be most appropriate for a child, even though they live here, to not continue to be educated in this school. We might send them to a nearby school. That's generally been an agreement that the Superintendents broker between themselves. This is now further defining what it would take for Superintendent to make that happen, at district expense. If you can make arrangements privately to send your child to a school somewhere else, certainly on you, but this is when the district would be doing it.
Because we only get paid, like, when I sent my child to Char School, the district lost money, because I took some of that money and brought it to the Char School, but I had to pay the difference. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay.
That's why he has to okay it.
That's right. The last policy is JLCF, our Wellness Policy. This policy's already on the books. It was driven largely by the reauthorization of WIC back in '05, '06, '07, '08, something like that, and we had to have policies, all districts had to create policies for wellness, and it's far-reaching, it speaks to community involvement, it speaks to nutrition, the sale of foods in the building, those that are provided by the school lunch program and those that are not, talks about allergies. My understanding is that we're adding a nondiscrimination statement to this. I don't see anything else that is added or adjusted, so, it may also take, where's the agenda, is this just for review? So, that's a first read on wellness, and that'll come back up at our next meeting. Any discussion about any of those policies at this point? Hearing none, then I draw your attention to the minutes of February 4th, 2016, the minutes were in the packet, I seek a motion to approve as presented, both public and non-public.
Make a motion to approve the February 4th, 2016 Town Council Chambers Meeting, a School Board Meeting.
Second. Have a motion from Mr. Zink, a second from Mr. Kennison, any adjustments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And we're unanimous. There was a manifest handed around earlier.
I'll make a motion to approve the Payroll and AP manifests, 21816, payroll in the amount of $251,864.38, count payable manifest in the amount of $171,232.63, for a total of all manifests of $423,097.01.
Second.
Have a motion for Mr. Zink, second from Ms. Shelton, for the manifests as presented this evening, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And we're unanimous. I don't believe we have need for non-public this evening, we had one at 6:00 that preceded this meeting, to continue our conversation about transition planning.
Oh, forgot.
Anything else that should be before us, for the good of the order tonight, from the Board?
So we will, next meeting, we will talk about transition more?
We'll keep going, we'll talk about the job description, in the meantime, in the meantime, we will communicate the actions taken tonight, within the district and outside of the district, so that those announcements become public and well-known.
I just had one, and I spoke with Meredith before the meeting, and that's about the principal search.
Oh, please, yeah.
It is of the essence, this is.
Thank you.
You look at the calendar, and we've got to really crank on this thing, the Board asked me to facilitate the principal search, and quite frankly, I don't think there's anything I can add to it. We've talked to Meredith, between Pat and Penny, we know about the advertisements. I think we do want to get some input from the Board, and anybody else, frankly, about the most important characteristics of that Superintendent, of that principal, just like we did on the Superintendent, because that's going to be the guide for the search committee. What are the qualities, what are the experience in education, so forth, we want to have, get it to Meredith as soon as possible, and then, if I can be of any help, I'd be glad to, but I think, I think we're ready to roll.
Any interest or desire to workshop that, for any reason? For instance, I mean, ads, we're going to get out ASAP, a profile, or something like that, would it be of value to come together, 6:00, next, two weeks from now, at this session, invite public input, and Board input, and fuel that profile with a conversation like that, or is that not timely enough? Will we be done with the profile by then? I don't know.
That was directed to me?
No, I'm kind of looking. Al threw you under the bus, so I was looking at all, I was looking at all three of you out there. The three of y'all that have to find a principal now? We found the Superintendent, we're done.
In terms of, in terms of the profile information, I mean, I think you can get an ad out and still be developing some of the profile pieces, so I think that would be timely, yes. I think you're going to want your job posted for several weeks before you close the applications. Yeah, ideally, Dr. Martin and I spoke about that briefly, ideally, we'll have something ready to roll out in the papers next week. We won't make deadlines, you know, by getting something out tomorrow, but we'll be able to get something out for next week, and so I think if you were to workshop it on the 3rd and collect that kind of information, you'd have ample time to help have that information formed.
Thank you. She's only now beginning to get a sense of what this is going to be like.
Did she sign everything?
She did.
I just want to reiterate how important it is, I think if I took each one of you and asked you what the characteristics were that we were looking for in the Superintendent, you could, you could.
Principal.
No.
But in a Superintendent, because we work with them day by day.
My point, Patricia, was, if I asked the Board to talk about what they, was so important with the Superintendent, I think we could all, we could all.
Right.
And it's just a, it's a, it's a very good guy. Right, Patricia?
Yes.
Thank you. So, what does the Board think about that? Do we want to workshop it at 6:00 on the 3rd of March, invite the public, and invite public, and have that be a conversation about the principal?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Can we put that in the, can you throw that in the newsletter?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll do that on the 3rd.
Great.
Thank you, Al, for having to announce his own assignment, I'm sorry I didn't say that earlier, that when the Board talked about, as we talked about our transition planning, and we talked about Chris moving to this position, we knew that we were going to have to beat feet on a search, and we said, Al, you did such a great job, please help us out again, so.
I'm looking forward to a big raise.
A big raise, it's good. Anything else that should be before us at this meeting? Hearing none, I seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Mike Kennison, a second from Elizabeth McKinney, all those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We are out at 8:01. Good night, folks.
Good night.